Welcome, welcome, welcome to Council Watch Glastonbury again. I'm at October now, so hello and hello to everybody in Glastonbury. I'm still catching up with what's been happening in the last couple of months and this is the new one. I'm doing a kind of intro. I don't normally do an intro, but this one is interesting because I go on the video for the Glastonbury Council meeting for October. And if you are interested in that, you can do it. Again, the link will be under my video. And there's something you need to notice immediately. What is it? Half attendance? Not that many people there. I wonder why? You're soon going to find out. It's a bit of a strangled route we're going to take today because there was a lot more going on in October's meeting than September's. So we may double the time or maybe go a little bit further. I don't know. We've definitely got lots of excerpts for you and bits and pieces of commentary. So we'll see how we get along. Here we go.
Council meeting, Glastonbury Town Council. Welcome especially to members of the public who've come and special welcome if you've come to do the public participation and just address us on whatever you wish, right at the beginning. The last couple of months, actually, there hasn't been hardly anybody in public participation, but tonight we've got a full slate, so that's really nice. You're welcome. Before, I should say, I'm Lokabandu, Mayor of Glastonbury, and I'll be chairing tonight. Before we begin, I should mention there is no fire alarm planned for tonight. So if you hear the fire alarm, please take it seriously. I can't believe it'll do much damage with the rain outside. You'd never know. Take it seriously and make an orderly exit down the stairs and we'll assemble outside.
And they get to introduce too, of course. And again, why am I dwelling on the beginning of this this meeting a bit more than I did with the last one? Well, you know, it's all a bit nervous, isn't it? The mayor seems a bit nervous. How do you cope with it, you know, when people actually turn up? Members, real members of the public turn up. It will all unfold slowly but surely. Why is he getting worried about the alarm system going off at the beginning? You know, we may, we may have a problem with the, with a fire, you know. We can't have this kind of just back and forth between the public and the council. All right, I'm getting a bit glib and I'm having a bit of a laugh with it, but it is kind of interesting, you know, re-watching this stuff. All right, let's, let's move on anyway. The main shocker, you know, from the public perspective is one of the first public speeches by a couple of guys called Tom and Alex who are working for R4 Scaffolding and they're at the Red Brick Building ostensibly. Now, Lokabandu introduces the topic as the Life Factory. Now, it's a complex in Glastonbury and we're going to find out what Tom and Alex's complaint is right now. But all I'll say is there's a lot of confusion and there's at least a spoonful of obfuscation possibly going on with Glastonbury Council. You're going to see them kind of distance themselves from, from the topic, really. Apart from one very good councillor, councillor Osborne, and we're going to get into her speech later on. But this seems to be the main event, the first 20 minutes or so with Tom and Alex. So let's have a look at what they're going to say to us.
So public participation, I've got five people pencilled in. I'm not sure the first one is here, Heather Hall from the Glastonbury Cricket Club. Nope. But second, we have Tom and Alex from R4 Scaffolding, who I think want to address us on the Life Factory. So if you'd like to come forward, there's a microphone just there and please speak to us. It'll just work. It'll just work.
It will just work.
Soon as it goes green, it's working.
I'd just like to introduce ourselves. We're Tom and Alex from R4 Scaffolding. We were brought on board to scaffold the Red Brick Building. And we just got some questions really about what's really going on. So to start, we are owed a large amount of money. And it's not now just affecting us as a company, it's affecting our employees. Because where we're owed money, obviously not going to affect for them. So then if we're owed money, then it means that we've got to find money elsewhere to keep our company afloat. During this whole sort of outcome, or deal, sorry, we've never posted anything online or gone to anyone about it. We've been trying to deal with it within house, sort of see what's going on, but we've never really been given any answers. So we were invited here tonight, so I was wondering if we can get some answers, really. We were told from the beginning that there was a set amount for the project, but we were never told how much the amount was. And at no point were we told during the project that the money ran out. So therefore, we just kept turning up, putting the scaffolding up, assuming that our invoices are going to be paid. The state of our kit and the site is unacceptable, really. We've not really worked on a site like it before. It's getting to the point where some of our employees are refusing to work there just because of how bad the site is. And some places is unsafe as well. We've had to keep some of it up because they've not supported one of the walls. And now we're sort of like stopping and starting, we're going there, then we're coming back, going there, coming back. But we've never like kicked up a fuss. We've always sort of gone with it, sort of tried to keep everything level headed. One of the workers there, Keith, he asked us to put a job up for him, which we happily would, but we told him that we wanted to pay him upfront. He said to us that he would pay us weekly, which we said, look, we're already owed money. If you've got the money, pay us upfront. He went behind our back, got another scaffold for him in, used our scaffolding to cross the bridge, and then they attached their scaffolding to our scaffolding for safety reasons. So it wasn't until we drove past and seen it that we realised it went behind our back. Again, we didn't kick up a fuss. We just let it be because there's no point arguing over something that we don't know what the outcome is yet. We just want to know where the money's gone, really, because everything we've put up, you can physically see where our money's gone. So if we put a tower up, you can see where that invoice has gone. If we've done this, you can see where our money's gone. They're saying the money's gone. Well, we don't know where it's gone. We sort of want answers to where it's gone. And if it was gone way before us putting stuff up, why weren't we told? This project's on hold for a minute, basically. Obviously, where it's such a big project, we turned down other projects to help this project. So therefore, we lost money elsewhere. So now we're in a position where we've lost money for other projects and lost money for this project. So we're sort of double the money lost, really, if that makes sense. Why is it allowed to get this far? Why is it, why is it now, it's been, what, five, six months since we've been owed this money? Nine months? Why is it gone? Why has it gone that far? Why has it not been dealt with one month, two months, three months? That's about it, really. We just sort of want some answers, really. We just sort of wanted to know. Yeah, and are we going to get paid? Because obviously, as a council, we signed the contract at the beginning of the job. So we want to know where we stand, really.
Thank you.
And that was it. Thanks so much for your time.
I should maybe have said at the beginning, the etiquette is we don't respond immediately to you here. Because often the issues raised are quite complicated, but we do note it and we will try and make sure a response comes as soon as possible. It's a, it's a very live issue. I totally get it. I totally get that you want an answer. Councillor Henderson?
I completely sympathise with you. I've been self-employed for 40 years. I know exactly what it's like not getting paid for jobs and cash flow is king, obviously. I mean, this is obviously not a town council project. It is a Red Brick Building or a Life Factory. And it is, there is nothing on our agenda tonight where we're going to discuss this. I mean, we would gladly, I think, you know, get this sorted out as quickly as possible for your guys' sake. But at the moment, it's not in our hands, but we will do what we can to sort of find out what's at the bottom of it and try and get things moving for you.
So where did the money come from?
The money came from the town deal, which was from central government, from... Yeah.
Other projects.
Other projects. So, and so Somerset, Somerset made the council originally, but Somerset Council hold the money, but the money is from central government originally.
Then the projects can't go ahead?
Yeah? I'm not sure what happened to that money, to be perfectly honest. I mean, as far as I'm aware, because it didn't go to those projects.
So we're not going to get into a whole discussion about it. But we will get an answer to you. We've got your contact details, I'm assuming, yeah? I'd like to continue with public participation, if you don't mind.
So there you have it. A good seven and a half minutes of old fashioned Glastonbury drama. What I'm hoping to do is augment this video for the October meeting with possibly a guest or more to talk about the background of the town deal. Now, we're going to get a potted version of that history later on in this video. But I think it's something that for people outside of Glastonbury or perhaps outside of Somerset, you know, they could do with some, some kind of concentrated interview on that topic. So I'm hoping to get that done. But all I'll say is that I didn't know this was going to happen. I just turned up at the meeting like everybody else. What I found interesting during Tom and Alex's presentation was that they're looking at us. They're looking, they're looking at the public. Well, at least the speaker is not looking at the council. So he's not got much faith in anything that the council are going to do to respond initially. Although towards the end of their visit, we do see that he's chatting with certain councillors. So that there is some back and forth going on and I don't know how this was coordinated. But it's very interesting. I think the council was generally were a little bit taken aback by it. Having said that, on the council side, something must have been organised because there was a discussion point already mentioned. I don't know if it was a response to Tom and Alex's presentation or not, but the whole thing is coming to a head with the town deal and particularly how all of these, this money has been allocated within the Red Brick Building. And we'll get more detail on that in a bit. Do I want to say much more about it now? No, I think we're just going to keep going. We also have another speaker called Jeremy, who has been close to the situation at the Red Brick Building. What else is worth mentioning? There is one thing that I was going to hold off for, but let's just mention it. The absence of Indra Don Francesco is interesting, along with a lot of the councillors, as I've already said. I just think that's interesting. Is that a response also to the problem that's being talked about? I want to conjecture that you should have that question in your mind as we keep going forward here. Okay, I'm going to leave it with Jeremy. Jeremy, let's, let's see what he has to say.
Yes. In a minute, we've got one more public participation. The thing we do after that is light the unity candle and have a minute of silent witnessing. So I'd like to invite you to come forward and light it for us in a minute. We've got one more public participation, which is a Jeremy. Is a Jeremy with us? Who I believe also wishes to speak on the Red Brick Building.
Sorry, I got here a bit late. Okay, when I was asked to speak about that, this, I thought, you know what? I'll write it down, what happened there. I was involved right from the beginning when it was the Accelerator Fund. So way, way back when it was like replace the roof of the building, clean the building, very, from the very, very beginning. And I started to write it down. It came to about eight pages. So this time, last year, at Christmas time, we were six months ahead of schedule. We still had well over £400,000 in the budget left to put on the roof. The roof was already priced up, it's £190,000. It was a three-month lead time. The roof would have been on that building, we all know this, the people who work there, by June, and the building would have been sealed up, finished. I don't know what's happened to that money, the money that's left over from that, that's still in there. And then we started to have to butt up our building up to the Red Brick Building. And it turned out the Red Brick Building, I think they're into £200,000 worth of work now on their building, on the Red Brick Building, not on Building C, not on the Life Factory, on the Red Brick Building. You've got a situation down there with the Red Brick where, I'll give you an example. One person was employed there as a maintenance manager. Within one year, he's on the board, he's on their board of Red Brick Property Services, which manages the tenants in the building. Oh, who's running the bar? Oh, it's his wife. It's a conflict of interest down there. You've got people who are employees are then being put on the board. You've got people coming to ask professional builders. I'll give you an example. It's like if you're a pilot and you were flying an aeroplane, people would come over and say, well, do you really need two wings on that aeroplane? People were asking questions from there. It's way out of their jurisdiction, dealing with a multi-million pound budget when they've only turned over tens of thousands of pounds in the year. We were told in the beginning, oh, there's a review, the council's put you on hold. And basically, the council were misled actively by people who were kind of employed by the Red Brick. And hopefully, when you forward your report, you're going to see this because we were on budget to finish that project six months ahead of schedule and fulfilled all the things that were in the original application fund. We'd employed all local people, we were training people up. We had people from, who don't live in bricks and mortar dwellers, non-bricks-and-mortar dwellers were employed for us. We were way ahead of schedule. Where's the money, where is the money now for that? And we've got at least, at least 40 people who haven't been paid. So I would ask the council now, when you have released this money, please do not release it to the Red Brick. Please pay the workers yourself, direct from the bank. Please don't let the Red Brick manage this project because they have no idea what they are doing. There's corruption and it's in the Red Brick Building. It wasn't in anything to do with the Building C. The corruption is in the Red Brick Building. Friends employing friends, making them directors, employing their spouses. The Red Brick's meant to be a community building. What's it giving back to the community, that building? It doesn't give back anything. It runs a commercial bar and a commercial restaurant. Maybe once in one afternoon a week, they might let the homeless people in and give them a cup of coffee. Nothing is happening for the community from that building. It looks like it is. Go and read their pamphlets. It all looks great. Go and actually see what happens there. Very little. Please pay the workers and please don't put the Red Brick in charge of that Building C. It's a building for the community and we're waiting to get in there and do it and do it as a community. Thanks very much.
So thank you, thank you very much to both of you, Tom and Alex and Jeremy, who speak on the Red Brick Building. I completely share your concerns that we need to know the story of what happened. We're going to move on in a second. I just want to make it clear that people often speak about the council and get muddled up about which council they're talking about. So the money has gone from national government to Somerset Council, who's dispersing it to all the different town deal projects, one by one. In this case, the Red Brick Building. We, our Glastonbury Town Council, who have nothing to do with the money, we have an interest in it because clearly we are part of the town, you are part of the town, the whole thing's part of the town. But the money is not coming to us. It never has and never will. It's coming up later in the agenda when there's a motion about it and we'll get to that in due course. So if you're willing, I'd like to move on now to the rest of the meeting.
I'd like to suggest we move that item further up the agenda, please.
I was thinking that. We've got Liz Lasham with us tonight, who's from Somerset Council. And I asked her if she'd like to move it up, but she said no, because she's got an interest in all the other items. So I prefer to just... Okay. Okay. Fine. So I'm happy to change the order, actually. So we'll proceed and then when we get to the beginning of the meeting, which hasn't officially started yet, we will look at changing the order. It's recorded, it's heard, it's witnessed, but it's not minuted.
So, there you go. I thought that was actually, we've got some distance from the topic now. So we've got these guys who've not been paid, they've been doing work. And it's even a bit hazy as to how long they've been doing it. They say, I think one of them says five to six months and then the other joined, rejoined us with nine months. So we've, we've got something that's been going on since mid to late spring, right? So it's been going on for ages, this thing. And then Jeremy gives his speech. And I just made some notes here. There's not much to kind of recapitulate, you know. We've got the statement that the council were misled and at least 40 people haven't been paid in the Red Brick Building. Now, that's going to factor into November's meeting because we do get some comeback from the councillor in question about what part of the building the monies are concerned in, et cetera. And who's been paid and who's not paid, that kind of thing. So you're going to hear more detail on that in the next video. But it's all very fascinating. And also, I just wanted to keep that speech rolling right to the end because what you probably don't hear towards the end is Jeremy asks from off-mic, was my speech logged in? And then he says, was my speech minuted? And, well, Lokabandu is saying that the meeting hasn't officially begun. That's another format problem. I wanted to get into this in another video as well. I've got big problems with the way these meetings are set up and then the interaction between the public and the council. I'll leave that for another time. But what we find out is that his speech is not in the minutes. It's recorded. He says it's recorded. You know, obviously I'm showing you the footage. But he says it's recorded, it's not minuted, right? So my assumption there is that what the councillors say and anything that's logged in for the agenda that they want to speak about within that meeting format is minuted. But we don't get to be minuted. Our concerns as members of the public, as far as I'm concerned, aren't minuted. They're on, they're on a video that you might or might not watch. Hopefully, you're watching them in the context of our video here. But that's interesting as well because they don't have a reference point to go back to because that speech has not been minuted. And that will come up again in another section of this talk. So, and then it gets, because I was, I couldn't remember how the meeting had gone. And I thought, has the apologies for absence already happened? Did they leave it off-camera before they even started it? But then on a re-watch, I see that they do do the apologies for absence. The meeting hasn't officially started. All those speeches that were given prior to Lokabandu saying that are not minuted, as far as, as far as I know. And they do the apologies for absence then. I've already kind of said, the apologies for absence are interesting. We've got a lot of councillors not there to respond to these major two big speeches that are given from the public at the beginning. We do have councillor Steve Henderson, you know, sympathising with the problem. And we're going to see at least one of the councillors get rather irate about this topic as well, justifiably, in my mind. So yeah, it's a big drama. What else have I got to say for this section? Let's just see how things play out. Let's look at this apologies for absence.
So we're now starting the formal meeting of Glastonbury Town Council. You're still really welcome. The first thing to do is receive apologies for absence. As you can see, there's a few gaps around the table tonight. So apologies for absence.
I have had myself apologies from councillors Price and Cotter, both unfortunately owing to being unwell. I understand you've received other apologies.
I've got apologies from councillor McDougall and Smyth, also unwell. I guess it's going around. Declarations of interest?
An Indra, she very...
Oh, yes. Thank you. Also, Don Francesco, also unwell. Yes, thank you. Declarations of interest? Any new declarations of interest not already recorded? Nope. So let's, let's approve and sign the minutes of the last meeting.
Yes, apologies for absence. All very suspicious. And what's even more suspicious is he mentions all the councillors and then he has to be reminded about Indra. He says, oh yes, she's unwell too. And then he says, I guess it's going around, see, all of these illnesses, all these people unwell. Okay, what else do I have to say? Okay, that is the, the kind of retreat, you know, the kind of backpedaling from this issue at the Red Brick Building. But not, not in the entirety of the council. So this speech by councillor Osborne is the most interesting and fiery that we get as a proper response from a councillor to all that's gone on earlier in the meeting. And so let's have a watch of that now. It's very interesting.
Yeah, on page 37, in response to councillor White's update on the town deal, I asked a question about people who are not being paid. I note that this has not been minuted, nor has councillor Don Francesco's response.
Should we minutise that?
If you'd like to. I would then suggest that you don't sign them this evening and we take them away and add that section in. It's up to council whether you would like that specifically minuted.
I certainly so, yeah.
I'm happy to, sure. Okay. Okay, so we'll make that modification. Page 37. And page 38.
So you won't be signing them this evening, your worship. These were circulated quite some time in advance. It does help if these kind of queries are raised beforehand because I could have had a set ready to, to sign this evening. But they'll come to the next meeting, your worship.
Okay, fine. So there's been a proposal to move the item 10 up the agenda. To do that, I just need somebody to propose it and second it.
Is that you? Propose that we do that?
So proposed by councillor Henderson, seconded by councillor Cook. Are we happy to move it up the agenda? I... Okay, so let's do that next.
Is that unanimous or your majority, your worship? I wasn't watching. I do apologise.
I believe it was unanimous, yeah. So item 10 is a motion from councillor Osborne, seconded by councillor Cook, calling upon the town, with us, calling upon the town deal board and offices of Somerset Council to make public the full independent audit of the Life Factory project. I'll invite you to say a word or two about it in a second. I'll just say a word myself, that it's been noted already that some nine months ago, it was flagged that the Red Brick Building was a project of concern. Somerset Council paused the funding. The Red Brick Building conducted an audit of what was going on, sent it to Somerset, not to us, I haven't seen it. Somerset then decided to conduct their own audit, which has been in process for some time. It's been expected imminently for quite some time now, but hasn't yet appeared. And this motion is asking that that audit, which had come at any time, really, is public when it comes out. Do you want to say a word about it, councillor Osborne?
I'm concerned that, given what we've heard tonight from people who have not been paid, that this audit may well expose some people to, shall we say, embarrassment. I think that's the kindest way I can put it. And I am concerned that it will be lost in the audit committee somewhere in Somerset Council. The whole town deal started off with, I think it was 10 projects. As you said correctly earlier, two of them got pulled. Some of them seem to be jogging along quite nicely. We had a very in-depth explanation about St Dunstan's House. I understand that the tour leisure thing is going ahead quite nicely. And the Abbey Bailey's Building seems a bit slow, but it's there. But some of them have been mired in difficulty. The Bride's Mound project, which I thought was really good, it lost its little bus because it was a capital cost only.
The bus was the park and ride, not Bride's Mound. So that's not correct.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. I thought it was just, okay. So, but it's just going to be an expensive hut, let's be honest now, when it was going to be something much more. And the site for the non-bricks-and-mortar people, that turned out to be on a flood plain. So that hasn't worked out so well. And the Clean Energy Project though is taking up that site. And that would be good because they'll be able to do electric stuff on water, which would be really a new, innovative thing. But the real issues are around the ones from the Red Brick Building. There are two projects that were done out of that building. One of them is a farm. That involves the purchase of two fields with a sewage pipe between them. It amounts to totally 22 acres. And £286,000 or £13,000 an acre was paid for that land, despite the fact that at the time agricultural land was on average only 6,500 in Somerset. It's interesting that such a very expensive... It's interesting that such a very expensive piece of land was bought. Anyway, then we go on to the Life Factory or Building C, because that's now joining Glastonbury Abbey as one of Somerset's picturesque roofless ruins. Seventy per cent of three million pounds allocated has been spent, apparently. But now there are differing stories. I'm told there was money, I'm told people haven't been paid, I'm told the money's gone. I don't know where it's gone, but I'd like to know, and I think the people in this room would like to know, and people out in the town. Now, I know that Somerset, as Lockabandu has said, have started an inquiry, and they're not a body known for their financial acumen, but they were so concerned that a section one-five-one was put in. And it, to investigate the project's finances. And that's really what this is about. It's about making sure that there is full transparency, that what has gone on in this, well, rather dark and murky corner of the town deal board is brought to the light so that everyone in this town, who was promised so much from that town deal, but is actually going to receive so little, because so much of the money has been squandered. We need to know the full details of what happened. It needs to be public, and I urge everyone to vote for this motion.
Thank you. My understanding, although I'm not an expert on Somerset Council, is that the intention is always that it was and will be public. I don't know that for a fact, but that's certainly my understanding. And personally, unless anybody speaks, wants to speak against the motion, I suggest we move straight to vote. I certainly support it. Does anybody want to speak against this motion?
Enable Liz Leshen to speak.
Do you want to say anything, Liz, or shall we move to vote? So all those in favour of the motion as tabled is unanimous. Thank you very much. I very much look forward to it coming out, and I'm as interested as you are in what it says. And I hope the whole thing moves forward and people get paid as quickly as possible. I really do. Thank you. So thank you for coming tonight. I'm sorry it's been such a painful process for you. Feel free to stay, but we are as keen as you are to find out what happened.
Okay, there you go. That was her response to everything that had gone on earlier in the, the meeting. I, I thought that was a really cogent, brave, fairly detailed, on-point response. So I was kind of impressed with that. I feel like that she's right in the sense that there's going to be some real comeuppance probably next year, as all of this comes to light. What do we know and not know from the public's perspective? We don't really know. I mean, I'm, I'm a newbie to Glastonbury over about two years, so like I said, I'd like to get another take from somebody who's been here longer on the town deal. But I've just written in my notes, heads will roll, exclamation. So that's pretty much my kind of response to it. And I think at the moment, to add a little bit more nuance, you can see that Glastonbury Council are distancing themselves from the issue. Somerset Council are the people to blame. And then in November, November's video, you're going to get Indra responding to some of this stuff as well. But I suspect there's a lot more nuanced even than that, you know? The idea that, I mean, Somerset Council isn't far away, they've got their meetings, you know? So we're hopefully going to get some video from their meetings, maybe, and have some commentators from their meetings. But just on the local level in Glastonbury right now, we can see that this is a massive issue. People, every time I talk about the town, the town with other people, everybody knows about this problem with the, the town deal and where the money's gone. She rightly says that some projects went forward without any issues, but this one location is a big problem. They got millions and millions of pounds for this. And it's essentially just money disappeared into the ether, as far as I can, from what I can glean so far. So it feels like the council are going to try to play the observer role in a sense and say, well, we're just watching Somerset Council, you know, not really do their job. So we'll see about that, because I think it's a little bit more complicated and it will involve members, plural, of, of Glastonbury Town Council as well. But we won't have any detail on that, and that's not making any personal accusations at this point. But that's just my gut feeling about what we might see happening as a result of that stuff. So that's really the main topic for today. I am going to do some more sections from the meeting on other things. The next section is councillor Rooney Dougal, and this is going back to the, the other big issue that, that kind of started off this channel in some sense, which is all of their kind of emotional and financial investment in this carbon-neutral idea or, you know, climate change as a major issue and all of this nonsense. Incidentally, I mean, we have done stuff on the channel already, which is quite conspiratorial, you know, saying that there, there could be problems of weather manipulation here as well in the background. We don't have any local information about how that is working out. So we would be interested in, in, in any knowledge that we have about that. But also just on another point, which is that we don't, like I said at the beginning, I think in the intro video, we don't want to make it a conspiracy channel necessarily. If you're of the persuasion that you have questions about the climate change narrative even, or that you don't think that there is a climate emergency, for instance, that's absolutely fine. I don't want to get involved in camps of thoughts, particularly amongst the public. I just want to put videos out that, that are letting you know what their attitude is. So let's get on with that one. This is going back a little bit. She's reflecting on monies that they are allocating to what they call decarbonisation. And I will respond to what she's saying in just a minute.
Ideally, we're sending questions in advance. Councillor...
So yes, I did send my question in advance, and unfortunately Jane was away, but Connor answered as best he could. But it brought up in my mind something that I thought was a more general question, which I thought I'd like to raise with the town council. And this is, so if we look at, that initially came to me when looking at with the town council, where we've got the decarbonisation bit. And that is in town hall and council team expenditure, and it's down, or the fifth on the list after, after training. Now, it says here, twenty-five thousand is the budget. And that, of course, was what we agreed when we set the budget. But the previous year, we'd also set twenty-five thousand, of which some was spent. Now, when we were with the Climate Emergency Group Advisory Committee, we had a thing where we'd had the budget of seven fifty and there'd been an overspend for the People's Assembly for the soup. And what I discovered with Jane was that the money from the previous year could actually run over into that year, and that meant that the soup was paid for from the run over from the previous year. But of course, that run over isn't shown in our budget. So at the moment, it looks like, just using decarbonisation as an example, but I think it applies to other things as well, that we've got twenty-four thousand plus. But actually, we've still got money, like twenty thousand from last year. So actually, for the decarbonisation, we've got forty-four thousand. Do you see what I'm saying? But we don't know this. And so when, for instance, we're asking for money for something, and it's like, oh, there's not enough money in the pot, but is there actually enough money in the pot? Because there's what's left over from the previous year. So I thought it was a bigger thing about the budget and us knowing exactly what money we have got to spend on the different projects we've agreed to spend money on. And that's why I thought it was a bigger question that had come up. From a little question of me just trying to check what was happening, actually, it was with the, the SEAC and Resilience Committee, that one, that's where it originally came. But I thought decarbonisation was a nice example for us to understand the query that, that, that came up in my mind.
I think...
If I may, your worship.
Sure.
Yeah, so I mean, council had a chance to see the reply that I sent. In terms of actual accounting, you do account for your in-year revenue budget separately from any funds or earmarked reserves. So the council has earmarked reserves that are displayed on the, they were last presented on the year-end accounts that you all looked at in June. So in terms of knowing that there is money there to spend, certainly the officers leading any projects, I myself and Jane know how much is in these funds at each time. But what I would probably suggest is alongside the budget monitoring report, you also get a summary of any funds, so that it's in your guys' consciousness more regularly. Although in fairness, if, for instance, taking the decarbonisation fund, if there did need to be a certain amount of expenditure that was over the budget this year, no one would turn around and say, oh, there isn't money for that, because you've specifically earmarked money for it. So nothing would be blocked, because this is accounted for separately. But yeah, a regular summary of these funds as they exist certainly could be something that comes to either for council more regularly or the committees that look after these, these individual earmarked reserves. So they are accounted for, they are displayed, they are on the year-end accounts, but more than happy to improve our processes, especially as we move to a new finance system for next financial year, to make this for councillors more explicit. But certainly, officers who are leading projects and advising committees and council of what can and can't be done certainly are aware of these, these reserves. So they're not square all the way and hidden to not be spent. They're earmarked for a purpose, and I do hope to use them. We don't want money lying around doing nothing. But certainly, I can speak to the finance officer and see about a regular summary of earmarked reserves.
That sounds like a good move to me. Can I just... Councillor White?
Thank you. Yeah, a, a good example is youth committee. So if we've got like money earmarked for projects, but they haven't started yet, that's always on our tally. So we've got like the running budget for grants of the year, and any ring-fence money for those other things.
Okay, so that was Serena Rooney Dougal talking about this decarbonisation funds. We're in the section of the meeting where they're talking about expenditures, which we don't always get into in depth on this channel. And normally, maybe I, I might not, I might just skate over that. But I just want to kind of show you how embedded they are in the climate change narrative. And they've allocated, she's, she's making some stipulation as to how they can view the allocation for funds on decarbonisation, which is essentially a response to a climate emergency in quotation marks. And I just thought it was worth putting in there. So you guys know, they've allocated from last year and this year combined, forty-four thousand pounds for this, okay? Now, if you have questions about a climate emergency, or you want to get even more conspiratorial, fine. But, but I just thought that was an interesting thing there. That's a lot of money. There's a lot of people in this town who are suffering incredibly from all kinds of stuff over the last few years. And I just look at this and I hear these figures, and I think that you should know about that, you know? That's your money essentially, that they are allocating towards these, it's what I would call gestural projects, that are a nod to something, you know, in the national psyche, as it were. And I just find it very, very questionable. So there you go. And we're kind of going to go, keep going on this theme unfortunately, because it relates back to the resilience twenty-thirty video that we've already looked at on the channel. So I'll let her continue talking a little bit, and it's in connection to another initiative they have.
The motion, the, the item is to reaffirm Glastonbury's Earth Protector Town status and appoint a representative. So some time ago, I don't have a date in mind, I'm afraid, a previous incarnation of the council...
I think it was about two thousand fifteen?
Maybe two thousand fifteen.
No, I can tell you precisely when it was. It was twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen.
As we had the, the Climate Emergency Group was formed, we had our first open day in the September of twenty nineteen. We had somebody from Stroud who came down to talk about Earth Protector Town status, and we voted, you'll remember this, Steve, we voted as a motion to the council the following month. So I think probably November twenty nineteen, but I might be one month out.
Anyway, some five years ago, before, before my time, not before your time, we declared ourselves, we joined a movement of Earth Protector Town Communities, Earth Protector Towns, and Claire Crumton, who was our mace bearer, was appointed our kind of champion or representative. She wrote to me a couple of months ago, asking us to find a new representative, and that's why it's coming here tonight. Councillor Don Francesco has volunteered to be the representative. She's not with us tonight because of being ill. But I'd like to, in a sense, I'd like a kind of vote of confidence in the, from us that we want to stay part of this initiative, and we're happy for councillor Don Francesco to be our representative. I'll just read out, and they have a website, which is earthprotectorcommunities.net, so go there any time. I'll just read out the key sentence. In declaring itself an Earth Protector Town, a council undertakes to collaborate and cooperate with communities, local government bodies, businesses, educational and other organisations, everybody, to protect land, wildlife, air, soil and water. So that's what we'd be doing, protecting land, wildlife, air, soil and water in our sphere. Doesn't cost anything, I don't think, nope.
Can I just ask one question? Was that the one where we banned glyphosate? Was that, that particular thing?
So the glyphosate ban came a few years earlier. So I joined in twenty nineteen, the glyphosate ban was already in place at the previous town council. And again, Steve would know when that was, but it was about twenty seventeen.
It was a lot earlier than twenty nineteen, I know that, yeah.
But if I may speak with regard to Earth Protector Towns, it's part of a legal body which is declaring ecocide as a legal body. And Earth Protector Towns sign up to the fact that we support ecocide. And this is come at United Nations level, and lots of different countries have now themselves supported the idea of ecocide as a crime. So it means that we're part of a whole movement that is happening, not, not just within Britain, but across the world. And I'm very happy to second your proposal, that we, we, we reaffirm our status and for Indra to be our representative.
Thank you. Shall we make that a vote?
Yes, please, your worship.
Are we happy to move to vote on that? Yes, all those in favour? All those against? All those abstaining? So one and against, a one abstention.
Thank you, it's a majority, your worship.
Thank you, everybody. It is meant to kind of mean, it's meant to result in practical action as well as a general intention, but I'll invite councillor Don Francesco to consider that and how to take it forward as soon as she's better.
Okay, so that was continuing with councillor Rooney Dougal talking about the Earth Protection Status Group that the council have been involved with. And they have, they have a little back and, bit of back and forth there about when that started. Initially began in two thousand fifteen, and then she said the Climate Emergency Group was formed in two thousand and nineteen. So the timing's interesting, right? Because we know that the, the Covid nonsense came in in the beginning of two thousand and twenty, so the council have had been prepped on all this stuff beforehand. And again, they are being led up the garden path by independent groups, again in quotation marks, who want to consult with them over these issues. And of course, as a member of the public, you initially, you initially have to say, who's funding these people? Where are their salaries coming from? And what are they intending to do with their, with their positions? Okay, I might be a bit severe with that, you know? The things that she's talking about it are pretty, you know, non-invasive of people or anything like that. It says, you know, they're, they're making sure they've got water butts and things like this. But you've got to watch for this, because... But you've got to watch for this because the the phrase I heard in this little section that she was talking about, it says that it doesn't cost anything for them, right? So um it doesn't cost us as members of the public in Glastonbury. Um so that's a good thing. But but what it is, is prepping people on a narrative. And that is the thing that worries me. And essentially saying that the council support ecocide as a crime, okay? That's a very important phrase and you might have to hone in on that and even wind this video back if you want. But that's essentially one of the main points in that little spiel she gives. Now, why is that important? I think it's important because what they're trying to do is get it into law, that they can have uh people who are creating ecocide, all right? If you're not with this narrative, they're gonna punish you legally if they can, okay? So that's how I feel about that. So I thought it was very nice to see Nick Cook, one of the councillors, uh the bottom left, put his hand up against that. Now, a lot of them just went along with it because they thought it was pretty tokenistic, you know, nothing very big. Um I think on the level of what these people are doing right now, okay, it's passable. You know, you can even not really have an opinion about that. But I worry that it's prepping people for this notion of you could you're gonna have ecocide criminals now, people who are doing things against the environment, which is really and doublespeak for against the council or against the council's interests, right? They're gonna use the environment as a way to punish people, members of the public, essentially. That's how I see that one going down, further down the line. Although, as I say, it seems fairly benign right now. So that's that. I've got a little bit more of a section on the same topic here. The other thing worth mentioning before I go on to the next bit of video is that Indra Don Francesco, the councillor, is is the councillor that's been voted to um represent that initiative as well. So her say goes on that, which is interesting. How far this is gonna go into next year and whether it makes any difference and what what the attitudes of the public are next year is gonna be interesting. Because I don't think that's gonna get much momentum. I think on a, on a day-to-day prep level, I think it's benign. But there's something else underneath, as I say, and Indra is supposedly in charge of that, you know. So we'll see how that goes. But let's get to the next bit of video as well. Um hold on, here we go.
So the next item uh is to receive and consider Glastonbury's Climate Adaptation Plan, which has been circulated to all of us in our links in our folders. But um you may not have seen it because it was only put there fairly recently. So um over the last few months, we've been working with with, um hold on, where is it? Somerset Wildlife Trust, thank you. Uh one of the first communities they've worked with to specifically develop a climate adaptation plan for us as our town. Um obviously, we have particular issues, being so close to the levels and flooding and so on and so on. But they've now completed our climate adaptation plan and launched it publicly. And our job tonight is to receive it and consider it and hopefully adopt it as a town council. So it's, here we are, yes. I think we've got two versions in our folder. One is the detailed one. One is the kind of more executive summary.
So I'll speak to this.
Yeah, please.
Um as, yes, so I've worked with Somerset Wildlife Trust in quite some detail with regard to shaping this plan. And we started off with a room full of people where we got an initial outline on things that people wanted to do. And that then went to a smaller group who refined it. Um and then it went out to public consultation and the Rural Life Museum. And then it went to a launch in St John's Church and now it's come to us. And already people are starting to take action, um which is really good. So for instance, the Repair Cafe are installing water butts. Um and they are getting them, so initially the 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 Act to Adapt had some money that they gave. Um and now proper job are giving the water butts at a discounted rate and the Repair Cafe are installing them for donation. So we've got stuff already happening, which feels really, really good to me. Um and I would like us definitely to move this forward, whether we move it forward via the Resilience Committee or SEAC. Um I think that is for us to to choose. I know SEAC have got it on the agenda for their next meeting and had been thinking of having a People's Assembly to try to get groups of people who would take different projects on. So there actually is action happening. It's not just meetings and talking. But people are installing water butts, people are planting trees and things that we actually can do to to do it. Because it 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 breaks up into very simple things. It means that that it really is doable, that we can take action in literal ways that will actually make some difference overall.
All right, well, I've not got much to add to that. They say they've worked with the Somerset Wildlife Trust to put forward this initiative and all the rest of it. So I've already kind of raised my criticisms of that. I think it's all well and good for the moment, but who knows? The next bit of video is again the same councillor speaking more about how this connects up with World Heritage. And this is kind of, if you wanna watch the town over the next few months, I think these are gonna be the two big issues, because they're not really gonna respond to all of the complications from vaccines, the deaths and everything. They're, they're not taking that on board in terms of any interaction with the public so far. So what's left really for the big topics towards the end of this year and into the new year? Well, it's the World Heritage, which which this channel hasn't really got into yet, the 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 voting by the people of Glastonbury for the town to be, to be given World Heritage status, okay? Although we have, we will have some video from November's meeting on that. And the neighbourhood plan. Now, the neighbourhood plan sounds very interesting. They've already sent they haven't, I don't think I received a pamphlet, a little leaflet on this. But a lot of the people in the town have have received a leaflet about the neighbourhood plan and it's all about how the public feels about the environment and trying to respond to the public's concerns about the environment. Because I think what's happening is is that they don't have two legs to stand on in terms of proving a climate emergency. So what they're gonna do is engineer, they're gonna use members of the public's concerns to kind of frame the narrative and move it forward. So if you have fairly benign criticisms or you want certain things done on the level of the environment, I reckon that is gonna be twisted into, you know, the existing climate narrative that they've already kind of established. So that is the reason for this section of video. And I'll play it right now.
Yeah, in 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 John's absence, let me just say that the World Heritage um are having an open day. Um.
This Sunday.
No, that is, that's the neighbourhood plan that's this weekend.
It it it's the.
Okay.
Yeah.
But then one is this weekend and one is November the third. I'm not comfortable which is which.
World, World Heritage this Sunday.
World Heritage.
Yes.
And neighbourhood plan will be. Yes, that's right. They got time to.
Yeah, from ten to four.
In the town hall, it'd be really good for people to 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 attend. Um because the neighbourhood plan and the world, well, both of them are part of the next meeting. So it'd be really great if members of the council could attend both of these. And they're both in the town hall.
There's quite a vigorous debate about World Heritage already going on on social media. Uh so let's see what happens in in public.
Good. We want, we want all the debate we can have for both of them, for both the neighbourhood plan and World Heritage. Because they're now all coming to consultation, all moved to that point. Um and we really want the public and the town to come to those open days and and debating themselves.
Okay, so I think I've said all I need to say about that. But I just wanted to include that section because, you know, we've got the World Heritage and the Neighbourhood Plan. And those are gonna be the two buzzwords going into the new year. By the way, I've already criticised this stuff. It's that they have adaptation. You've got to be aware of all these little buzzwords they're using. It went, went sometimes it's resilience, sometimes it's adaptation. And now they've got the neighbourhood plan, which is super benign, sounds lovely. Uh we'll soon see about that, I guess, next year. Um all right, and then um there was something that was in the geoengineering and the climate emergency interview that we've already posted that refers back to this councillor, councillor Oakden, um who gets up towards the end of this meeting and talks about the flooding on Cinnamon Lane. It's interesting because meanwhile, there is nobody actually dredging, there's nobody helping with the drains. So when they respond to the climate change stuff, that's all on the propaganda level. But when you have an actual flooding, right, there's no body, no institution that you can go to. So the forty four grand on whatever initiative we've just spoken about, that's there to be allocated for the future. And yet, we've just, we just find out in this video that um councillor Oakden has a neighbour who spent sixty grand on securing her property from flooding. And the councillor herself has spent thirteen grand. So let's roll that bit of footage now.
Councillor Oakden.
I'd like to um eventually talk to either councillor Cottle or councillor Hart regarding the flooding that is consistently taking place in Cinnamon Lane where I live. My home has now been flooded for the fifth time this year. I have currently spent thirteen thousand pounds on drains to take the water away. My poor next-door neighbour has spent sixty thousand pounds on drainage, much of which should have been cleared by Somerset County Council. This is an ongoing problem. We have done everything we can to keep our properties secure. And the lane continues to flood because the drains are not cleared. But there is one particular drain that should have been cleaned in August. It was arranged to be cleared by Highways Authority. We phoned the Highways Authority when they didn't turn up and we were told in no uncertain terms, sorry about that, but we haven't got any money. Um well, unfortunately for Somerset County Council, we are now taking legal action against them because this is destroying our property. And they have been told for the past five years that this has been going on with absolutely no real response at all. It's now flooded the next into the farms, it's flooded into the fields. It's a serious problem. And it's not our problem any longer. It is definitely the drainage, which is not cleared and broken drains would have not been repaired. And it is concerning, not just us, but a lot of other people now. And and we frankly are fed up of it. And we are, we will take legal action unless we get any sort of response from Somerset County Council.
Hi, councillor Cook?
Margaret, yeah. Sure you hear that? Um have you, as a group, sort of managed to get a survey done? Have you managed to get a land survey done or anything?
We've, we've tried, we've done a great deal of research into the, into what's wrong. Um but we now know that the drains, the drainage system that runs under the field, which was put in in nineteen, in the nineteen sixties, I believe, has now collapsed. Um now, the farmer has repaired all the drains that he can. He did that last year. And he's um sealed all the drains. But the problem now is that it's just simply pushed the water further down. And although it is not as bad as it used to be, I mean, my, my garden was under two foot of water. My field, I had a swan on it last year. I mean, it was, it's, when you're faced with unrelentless water, that is just pouring at you and you could do nothing about it, it's incredibly frightening and incredibly frustrating. And this has been going on for far too long. Um but my next-door neighbours are are in a worse state than I am. And they've asked me to speak today at the council. Unfortunately, councillor Cottle and councillor Hart are not here. But I will be contacting them. But, you know, these poor people have literally spent sixty thousand pounds repairing drains that are actually not their real responsibility to do. But they must keep their own property safe. So hopefully I'll get a response.
Thank you. Are we able to write to our county councillors just?
You guys certainly are as councillors. Yes, you can.
I'm thinking we could write to them, first of all, encouraging them to attend. And then secondly, about the specific issues they would have heard about if they'd been here.
Yeah, if you'd like to convey that to your county councillors, please do. It'll have more impact from you guys as fellow councillors than it will do from me.
Okay.
So there you go. We've never denied there is flooding in Somerset, but um there isn't help with it, is the conclusion that a member of the public draws um listening to some of that stuff. Um it's horrendous and Nick Cook gives his sympathy in this uh meeting. Um I mean, you know, you've got to pay them a bit of a compliment because they have said they're gonna lobby the county councillors in Somerset over that issue. So we'll see how this goes because we want the council to hear of these cases before individuals are taking institutions to court over issues of 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 them having to fund to make their their residences flood secure. I mean, it's just it's chaotic, it's crazy. And it should be that the council is hearing about that and handing it over to a body who can, a body or an institution that can do the job immediately, right? You know, within days of something happening. Everything seems to be in retrospect in cases like this, so it's it's really problematic. Okay, so it's a bit of a hodgepodge towards the end of that meeting, but that's essentially all that I've got for you today. But the big bombshell, I would say, was the um the funding issue. So we'll see how that plays out. If you've got questions or comments or anything, by all means, leave them in the um comments area. And I'll put the link to the council meeting under this video. Have a wonderful week.